Everyone was playing, we just sit him up, it's like, shall be in order to play the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The recording secretary is not available, do you have a volunteer?
He's filming it maybe. Are you volunteering?
Volunteer.
Yes. Welcome. Park Bar.
Here.
Gallagher.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Schneider. The rest are action.
Did I hear from them? Oh, I didn't hear from any of them.
They never did anyway.
Oh well, I'll make a motion to excuse their absence.
I'll second that.
Most in support to excuse the absence is all in favor.
Aye.
Carried. Um, have an agenda, any additions or requests to the agenda?
No, I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Accept.
Most in support to accept the agenda submitted, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Who's second here?
I did.
Okay.
Most carried. Anybody had copy minutes from last meeting by any chance?
There were none available.
We didn't have a court.
There wasn't a court from last meeting.
But there, I think there was a meeting at some time in the past.
Yeah, from September then.
Yeah, I don't know. We don't have.
No minutes available, right?
No minutes available, so we'll officially table approval of minutes till next meeting. Citizens. No citizens available?
No citizens, imagine that.
No citizen comments. Any communications, I am not aware of any. Anybody else have any communication?
Nope.
Unfinished business. We got any?
Uh, we're still working on the Parks and Rec Plan that, um, he has given copies to us, so Eric, I guess you should...
I'll just mention, just real quickly, the, um, so before we get the first few pages, uh, here's the next few pages. Right now, I'm really working on the goals and objectives part. I, John Paul Ray sent a email here with, uh, New Baltimore's Parks and Rec Plan and there's pretty cool in fact that I was able to use a lot of their stuff, some of the goals and objectives, and just change a few things around or whatever.
The Macomb County will also do graphics for us, for ours, so if you get this written up, kind of what you think, send it to John Paul and Jeff and say, "Look, this is the base of what we have. Polish it for us," you know, type of thing. The, we've gotta have this approved. We probably should have it approved and submit it January or February. It's gotta be approved by March to go for, um, uh, grants. Him and I met with Mark Broschu of St. Clair County, who walked through, he's the Parks and Rec Director for all of St. Clair County, walked through the park, went through the trail, and he said basically, "We could get $250,000, they'd hand it to us."
First time grant recipients.
First time grant recipients, we have waterfront, so, I mean, if we work out in our plan something, and, and that's just, "Here's $250,000 for your plan," it's not matching funds, it's not, I mean, it's...
Just a pure grant.
Yeah, pure grant, that we can do just about anything we want with. So we need to kind of put together a dream list in my mind for, for what we want that part to be, the, what we want the other part to be, and have it all cohesive and make a plan, and if they'll give us $250,000, we make it happen. I mean, 'cause we could have some really neat things in this town with that $250,000.
You could do a lot of things down there.
A lot of things.
Clear the rest of that elk kayak launch, parking, organized parking area.
Right. That handicap boat ramp, we, uh, met with them again, uh, I know I brought it up actually when you were on council. I kinda wanted to, I just wanted to do it, see what happened, but, uh, was kinda turned down, but the guy came out last week, was it? Yeah, last week, came out, met with me and Eric. He seems to think, "No, it'll go in there, it's not too shallow." The problem is, if somebody gets in that's handicapped, how are they gonna get out? And can they come back up and around? Would they see those rapids down there and say, "I don't know if I even wanna try this?" But it would be a neat place just to go and sit down, they have little benches built into these things sometimes, and, I mean, just sitting out on the river instead of beside the river is, is kinda cool.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure about the kayak launch, I mean, I'd love to have it, I think it, you know...
A lot of people kayak it now, and it brings people into town, you know, that's what I mean.
I, I, I agree.
Worst case scenario, it doesn't work out, that's another thing that's a grant.
Right.
I mean, Marysville, did theirs not work out, is that why they pulled it out of the water, or?
No, they're just moving it, they're building a huge harbor on St. Clair River.
Oh, okay.
They, they just had like two boat slips.
Right.
Now they have, it looks like it's probably gonna be 10 or 12 boat slips right into the river and a huge parking lot.
The quarry urns are a huge hit, they put it in, they, from time they put it in till they took it out in the winter, it's, uh, just here in the last few weeks.
I mean, we could almost put a little boardwalk in.
But they've got a natural loop right there that they do too around.
Yeah, there was people there yesterday when I drove by.
The kayak testing.
Yeah, well, you know, people could. I talked to Bruce Christie.
Put it near Toyota.
And told Bruce, I said, "Bruce, if we get one of these and they can put one down in your park, then people could actually take it half a day and go down there." Maybe we even work out some way where Jeff's bus goes up there at 3:00 in the afternoon and he's picking people up and bringing them back to Memphis.
Well, you know, what would really be great is, just for starters, just to like break people into a sound thing where we have him make a bus available to us for a Saturday, you know, you know, "Come float to Bell River" or whatever kind of a thing, and, you know, went on there and bring people back, I think that'd be really cool.
I think it'd be really cool, and I know Jeff would do it. And Jeff and his group would love to get involved with something like that, it wouldn't be a problem at all. Smart, smart buses running back and forth, even if it's four trips in the afternoon, you know? Every 30 minutes for two hours, so that you know everybody has gotten there and gotten back.
One other thing too about the river, uh, Sherry Faust from the Bell River Watershed, she actually has a grant in the works right now for bank stabilization on the Bell River, and I'm actually, I gotta get with her and, and we're gonna check it out, 'cause I'm not, 'cause I know this is not what she was planning, but there's actually a spot, if you look on that map, there's like a, the big, whatever you call it, the big horseshoe-shaped park, well, part of that, if you go on like the...
It's starting to eat away up here toward the...
If you go onto the lagoon side and look, you can see that it's really cutting into that hill.
We moved that fence twice, according to Mark.
So that stuff is something we're gonna have to deal with in the near future, probably, you know, I mean, I don't know if we'd be able to do it now, but I, you know, I would say...
Rivers do, or type, they'll beander around till they're straight.
Yeah, um, but, um, it, I mean, hopefully we'll be able to make it through spring, I said, I, and that's the thing that worries me, because obviously we don't want the river cutting into the lagoons.
That would be, oh, that would not be a good thing.
That'd be a bad thing. But, um, yeah.
But she had the plan all worked out where she, you know, saying, you know, she wants us to stop cutting like the grass up to the edge of the river in the park. She said like in the back, it's actually not too bad, 'cause there's like a lot of like woody brush and stuff like that, and that's really good. But she'd like to see us like, you know, maybe leave a two or three foot area like right along the river and just let it grow up and, you know, if people trample it down or whatever, that's fine, as opposed to like mowing right to the edge. Is one of the things that she had mentioned. But I mean, obviously in the parks, you know, there's, it's, you know, the water's pretty calm, it's...
Well, the bridge kinda dictate what goes on right there at the park anyway, so...
I don't know, it's pretty exciting that that money is available and we could do something with that park. But we gotta get a plan, it's gotta be approved. Mark Broschu said, said he would help. Then you sent it to him, what did he send you back?
You know, I don't know, I guess I'll have to ask down and see if she's got anything back from, 'cause I gave him their email address.
Okay.
Send mine, 'cause he sent me an email, I might not see it for two weeks.
Well, we need to, uh, just keep on top of this, this has to be in by, by March. It has, well, it has to be approved by March.
I'll be out north next week and I'm taking my computer with me and I got a lot of typing to do, and I'll probably knock this thing out in the next couple of weeks.
The other good thing is, um, our representative, Andrea LaFontaine, is in charge of this committee.
Really?
That's good.
That handles that money. So, um, we can get a letter, and she said she'd give us a letter to go into our application, uh, when we apply for the grant, suggesting they give us the money.
Where does this, where's the grant coming from?
Well, what happens is, oil and gas companies have to set so much of their money aside and put it toward these grants, and according to everybody I've talked to, this fund is hemorrhaging money. It's got so much money, they don't even know what to do with it. But this, if we apply for a grant, we're not competing. There are competitive grants, but our grant is the first time, uh, you know, with waterfront, we're not competing with anybody. Basically, it's almost a sure thing, we can get, we can get $250,000.
Ask for more then.
Well...
That's a, that's a bunch of markets.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, that, we could do so much with that waterfront, with $250,000.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about was getting a machine to, um, like a brush hog type of machine to mow around the lagoons, 'cause right now we're paying, I don't know, probably a couple thousand dollars a year just to do that.
Per mow, it's $780.
And we do it like three times a year or something like that?
We should do it more, because if the, the DEQ comes in and our grass is over a certain height, according to Mark, we could get in a lot of trouble.
And we were thinking that.
We do it, we do it three or four times a year.
With a machine like that, it would also help us to maintain like the path down at the park and the park, and so it'll be like a multi-use type of...
Is everybody here going on the trail? Yeah, I mean, it, it's really nice back there. Yeah, I mean, you get back there and go, "Wow, this is really beautiful."
There's some moose spirit in there, I couldn't deny that.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could maybe fog that whole place, 'cause the mosquitoes were horrible this year. Uh, even when it was cold, I was out there, it was cold and there was mosquitoes, I was surprised.
There were mosquitoes back in there.
Yeah.
Sloppy.
But, um...
We'll be able to fill in some low spots or something.
The thing is, we have, we have a general idea laid out for our trails now. What we need to do is find out, you know, what's gonna wash away in the spring. Get this plan approved, maybe put some, uh, like, there's some low areas back there, either we put bridges and allow the water to flow underneath, or we put, uh, you know, gra, like gravel or asphalt down on the trails. We need trail signs, 'cause people told me they got lost back there, I didn't get lost, but people flat out told me I was back here for 45 minutes gonna figure out where I was. I'm like, "It's just straight in and straight out, you know, and how hard is it?"
I would just tell people, "Just keep turning to the left."
Follow the rivers.
Left or right, it's a left or right.
Right.
So, um, you know, some trailhead signs, even though, um, from what I understand, the Historical Society had offered to do the actual trailhead, since we named it after, um...
Wells.
Wells, um, that they would do that. But I haven't talked to them anymore on it, and I didn't take, uh, um, anybody from the Historical Society guy for a walk. But, I mean, when people that have lived in the community for a long time come up to me and say, "Hey, I went down on that trail, how beautiful is that?" Like Liz Bruska, I mean, she was just like amazed with how beautiful that piece of land was. And when they say that, it, it makes a big deal, I mean, it's a big deal to me. So we need to continue to improve that and make it more user-friendly, have some fishing holes, have some areas, uh, maybe, maybe out in the middle of here, have a gazebo like we have out here, you know?
Such as little picnic carriers.
Yeah.
Picnic carriers for the people from out of town.
Burnpiles gone.
Let people from Richmond know that it's there, so get some of those people out here to look at it.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's people that have volunteered stuff, like, uh, Trump Kreider giving us that land out there in Burnham. You know, he signed a 20-year lease for a dollar a year.
Just out of curiosity, on the south side of the road that goes back there, how much does the city own back, on that side of it, towards Martin's house there?
Uh, about 10 feet.
Not very much.
Not very much at all.
How far?
I mean, I could talk to Ed, and he might give us some if we need, if we need like some...
So there's both, I was just thinking of bringing a trail up the other side of that road back to the park.
We need that, uh, you know, that would be really a nice turn loop, 'cause I walk back up the road.
Instead of walking up the road, 'cause, I mean, if you got cars going back, you know, to the, if you make other developed areas back there, another road becomes a little more busy perhaps, you don't want people walking that to get back, so another four-foot trail on the south side of the road would be perfect there.
Yeah, it would be.
We also talked about putting the poles at the park and at the backside, where you can unlock them and pull them out, like they have with the rails and trails at the road. 'Cause we probably won't really need any traffic back there, I would like, we probably just, you know, maybe clean that road up, straighten it out, level it off, and gravel it, and just let people either walk in or...
Well, it's not that far a walk either.
But, I mean, we should, we need to do something, we definitely have to think about that coming back.
Make that lose.
And probably gonna, where the, the burn pile was, there's probably gonna be something from that, when that gets all smoothed out, we're gonna wanna probably have something, maybe one or two like shortcuts in there or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, 'cause that's gonna be a little picnic area or something, or, I mean, I don't even know, do we wanna put a sand volleyball... Sand volleyball court there? It wouldn't be bad, I thought it might, that the ball might jump off into the river, but there's a huge pile of dirt that before, I mean, so it's protected, it's pretty well protected, it'd be a good spot for a sand volleyball court, 'cause, I mean, it's quiet, it's kind of enclosed, we could put a, a little stand there for people to sit on and have the sand volleyball court, I think we might get people actually here doing some activities.
And also, we get that money every year from St. Clair County for the Parks and Rec Village, so we can, you know, I mean, we've kind of got to the point where it's like, okay, we can't put any more, you know, we're buying picnic tables and putting them in the front part of the park, so at least now we got a place to put more stuff.
Oh yeah, we do, I mean, and hopefully, they can, they can also give us more money. Talking to Mark, he has some discretionary funds.
And he loved it back there.
Yeah, above and beyond, and it, and the other thing, I talked to my guy who does my lawn, Brand Conicton, and he said he'd adopt that first fishing hole, and come, every other week can do, mow around it and do the, um, the...
Whatever.
The maintenance of it. We had four or five other ones, and he said for $20 every other week, other people could adopt the other fishing holes, and he'd just come through every other week and do all of them. So I talked to G5, and they're probably gonna adopt one, and, um, you know, I'm gonna talk to Apollo EDM, which is Chris Kane, try to see if he'll adopt one. And, and they make things, so it'd be cool to have them make either their own plaque or sign or whatever, 'cause they work with metal, and make something that says that it's their, you know, the G5 Fishing Hole, or the, you know, uh, the Apollo EDM picnic area, or whatever. And maybe we can get them all adopted where, you know, people have ownership of stuff back there. Because, you know, every year, Grace Engineering has a huge, uh, party where they unveil their new products at Columbus Park. You know, this year they set up some kind of zip line system and, and were ziplining from a...
Obviously.
Like a cool, like a tractor trailer came in and something stood up on it, had like stairs, and then they ziplined to something they set up off, and it was, my son says it was really neat. So, I mean, it'd be nice if they did that in town instead of went out. And, and that's something I'm gonna talk to Lou about as well, but try to, let's try to get him out there next year in our park.
Well, speaking of that, actually, so on the 19th, uh, next Wednesday, I guess that is, yeah, next Wednesday, and I think 1:00, um, the person who releases the steel head into the Bell River for the DNR, you know, 'cause they, they stock it over, he's coming out there, I believe Sherry Faust, who's the Bell River Watershed, she's coming out there.
To our park?
Yeah, and, um, somebody else who is, I think somebody from the DEQ might be coming, 'cause I mentioned to Sherry that we may have to like alter the bank to put in the kayak launch, 'cause it's kind of, it kinda goes like this and like that, and he was saying you might have to, you know, cut a grate into it. So hopefully one of those people from the, whoever out of DNR or DEQ, there's some person out there who's gonna tell us what we can and can't do as far as altering the way the, the side of the river is. And somebody else is coming too, but I can't remember exactly who it is right at this moment, so that's 1:00, I'm pretty sure, next Wednesday.
I'll try to be back for that, I've got a 9:00 meeting on the grant to redo this building and put the ramp in at the community center.
Oh, really? That's that day too?
Yeah, that's, um...
Oh, yeah.
That's at 9:00 in the morning, uh, down at, uh...
I'll be there.
It's, it, well, that's down at, um, the county offices.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
There is something about there at the meeting, I was...
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about that. You know, I can't wait to see a new entrance here on the City Hall with, uh, you know, where you actually walk in and it seems like an office, and... I mean, it was really bad when it was that little wall that you walked into. And the doors, yeah, the doors to U Center are gonna be worked on, uh, you know, every, every door, this door, you know, I've had it where I've went to open it and thought it was locked, because it's so frickin' heavy. But, um, it's gonna have a push button available for handicapped access, the fire department's gonna have a push button available for handicapped access. And then, uh, we've got an architect, thanks to Foster's, who never does anything for the city. Foster's, Foster's, uh, gave us their architect to do architectural drawings for both the City Hall and the ramp, and to the community center.
Turn off the lamer on, so it's just gonna be a videotape.
And he's doing, he's doing the drawings for free, which would cost us $5,000.
Nobody's gonna watch it.
Oh, yeah, yes.
That's really something.
So, yeah, um, Dave and Tom Foster, good people, you know? Anytime, anytime I've ever asked them for something, just like, uh, Mike Vincare, owns Vincare Foods in Yale, he doesn't even have anything here in town, and anytime I've ever asked him for anything, he said, "Yeah, what do you need?" Uh, right now, he just bought, or is in the process of buying the old, um, uh, IGA and, and, uh, Armada, Armada.
Armada?
Yep, he just, he's buying the Armada Grocery Store.
He's always owned a K-Pac too, right?
Uh, no, the K-Pac one is, uh, Steve, uh, with, uh, the meat market, the country smartest.
Francis, oh, really?
Yeah, Steve Francis, both of them, I begged both of them to come here. Um, you know, they both come and they've looked at the building.
Somebody was over there just the other day?
Well, I would like to see somebody, well, the hardware guy in, in Yale.
That would be perfect for our...
Told Tom Foster that if he had his station in town, that he would put a hardware in Memphis. Now, if he sticks behind that, we may have a hardware, uh, next year as well. So everything is moving in a good direction, I can't complain, you know? This last year was pretty tough, but it seems like now everything's started to flow back in the direction that it was supposed to be going. So, I'm tired of delays, but I don't control delays. You know, things like the tank, the tank would already be in over here.
Yeah.
Except they brought it, they had it delivered, they pressurized them from the factory, uh, I think it's 15 pounds of pressure, it got here, it had 15 pounds of pressure.
So three weeks, sent it back with it.
So, so instead of it being put in the hole or covered up and, and done with, okay, now we gotta send it back to the factory, they couldn't just tack weld it, they had to tear the whole covering off of it and totally redo it. But from what I understand, I think it might be coming tomorrow, which, um, I gotta talk to Justin about, because...
Wow.
Because...
Larry's telling you it's coming next week?
Well, I don't know, I was over there and they were talking about Wednesday, or Thursday, that it was coming Thursday, it might be next Thursday. If it is next Thursday, uh, I need to talk to Justin about the water having, having, 'cause we gotta pump it full of water, so it doesn't...
Right, right, right.
Like a tin can of... But, uh, the nice thing is, uh, Sutrend and, um, uh, Rodney Zukas are allowing us to run, uh, fire hoses from the, right across their property, so that we don't have to truck water back and forth from anywhere. So, and nobody will be running it over, we could do it right across the street.
Right.
So maybe, all day on our hoses, and we don't want that, so it just seems like everybody's willing to help. Like I said, I'm amazed when people, "Oh yeah, I'll, I'll help you out, what can I do?" You know, it's, it's not me, it's the fact that people say yes to me for some reason.
Every time I see Sutrend, she's raving about her police chief.
That's good, you know what? Hearing anybody raving about anybody is fine with me.
Great guy, he's always smiling and saying hi to me.
Well, there does seem to be more presence now too.
Yeah, well, I get, I get not only, "Oh, it's good that there's more police presence," but, "Oh my gosh, there's more police presence," so I mean, I hear both. It was funny, the other day, uh, I was sitting and talking to this kid, and he was like, "You're the mayor, that must be good." And somebody heard, and I said, "Well, you know, it's not really that good." And he, he, he's like, "Well, why is that?" Somebody overheard I was mayor, said, "You're the mayor? I got a complaint." I said, "That's the reason it's not so good." 'Cause nobody comes with me good news. "Hey, you're the mayor, I got some good news." "No, I got a complaint." But, um...
I think a lot of people feel they, I think a lot of people appreciate what you're doing.
Well, well, some, some do.
I do.
I appreciate that.
A lot of people not need them.
Well...
Yeah.
We've had mayors in the past who were not as proactive as this one.
Well, the beauty is, you know, I told, I told Eric this the other day, the beauty is, is a mayor, you really don't have to do anything.
Right.
You don't have to really do anything. You come in and sign checks. There's been, there's been weeks, weeks where I've been busy doing other stuff and haven't really done anything for the city. The thing is, I, when I'm in my car, just driving down the road, I hop on my phone and I start making phone calls. And like I said, it's, it's weird that people, I mean, just like, uh, the county, they're like, "Nobody's ever called us." Like, "Really? Well, can I have this? Okay, we'll, we'll work it out." You know, the fact that we got our...
Yeah, they're nowhere existed.
The fact that we got our, um, master plan done for free, when we spent, what, $15,000 in 1992 on it, you know, that's a big deal. And that's just because the county said, "Well, yeah, you, yeah, you need help, you're a little city we've never even heard from? Yeah, sure, we'll help you out." So, I mean, it's not really me, it's, I'll make phone calls, and that's about...
It's all about communication as well, man.
Just like with that house that was redone, uh, for Rick, um, over there, I'd make a phone call, "Yeah, we'll have a dumpster there, yeah, we'll have a toilet there, yeah, we'll, we'll be there, we'll do this." "Yeah, Vincare, I'll bring all the paint, he, he brought buckets and buckets of paint." And, yeah, the siding, I mean, who gets siding donated? That's crazy. And then, uh, then just all the volunteers that showed up, and the fact that another guy said, "Yeah, you know what? I'll give t-shirts to everybody that shows up." It, it was all in three weeks, and it just happened because people said, "Yes, I did nothing but work on the phone." And I was walking around watching people work. And people were like, "Wow, you know, you, you did a lot here." I'm like, "You're the one working, not me."
I think you took a picture of a couple houses and got caught all out.
Yeah, exactly, that was funny. All those houses, you drive around now, all those houses have been redone.
Look, they're suited, I mean, oh.
Yeah, I mean, all those, all those houses that I got in trouble for taking pictures of have been redone.
Mom's house too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Moms, Sue's, this little one right over here, they've all been redone. So maybe we need to pick out some nasty looking houses. No, it, it worked out, I mean, yeah, I guess you put up with a little heat and then, uh, then it gets better, it really does.
We any more business?
No.
I, uh...
Any more monkey business?
I was trying to ask, has, have you ever heard anything about the old slaughterhouse, what, what the stories with that house? Do they want for it, or?
Ever.
Do they want to market?
$80,000.
Go, go talk about.
You're talking, you're talking about, uh, Gary Harry's place? Yeah, $80,000.
From street to street?
Yep, here's the thing, though, he thinks once a gas station, then it'll be worth more. That's the thing's a lot, I just shot myself in the foot then, right? So he's like, "Well, I don't know, the price is gonna go up." I'm like, "Fff."
No.
Here's the problem.
The building's not ready to shake.
The building's gonna, the building's a tear down.
Yeah.
Problem is, he owes too much on it. And, I mean, he owes, he's gotta pay off his loan, so we gotta give him enough to pay off his loan. The good news is, the USDA seems to think they've got the ability to maybe give 30% funds toward the project.
Through us?
To the city, or whoever, you know, here's the thing, if we can get some type of special assessment that we can borrow against to make part of it happen, and then some money from the USDA, and I've had a couple business owners say, "You know, I'd probably throw in $15,000, or I'd probably throw in $10,000."
Wow.
You know, yeah.
That's not money.
Yeah, I'm, we might be able to make something happen. Of course, I've also got other business owners, "I don't want anything to do with that." You know, so, I mean, you, you get people that are proactive and think, you know, what would this do for the city of Memphis? The fact that they could put, uh, shop entrances on the back and dress it up a little bit on the back and have, uh, people...
That's a great idea, a boardwalk there.
Yeah, exactly, a boardwalk back there with, it would make a big difference for that downtown, I'm sure.
Yeah, turn that alley into like a double wide sidewalk and then have parking or something united there?
Yeah, it would be really nice. And, uh, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some growth again, and we're gonna be this small community that feels like, "Okay, we can get services there." I think the reason we haven't had people coming to town in the last five years, it's 'cause they come here and go, "Well, where would I buy gas? Where would I buy, where would I buy this?" But what if they come to town and they go into the new bar, and they think, "Wow, this is nice," and have something good to eat?
Nice gas station.
Yeah, go to the gas station, get some, it's gonna, our, especially our east side of town, what Smitty's gonna do and what, what's being done at the bar...
What's he doing with the, the, is he gonna be like a gift shop or something?
I have no idea, he's, he's gotta...
Fixing it up, it's on them.
He's spending money on it, which is good. And if he expands his business into one and then puts another little office in there or something, I don't know, Yeah, he's, he's spending money on it, which is good. Um, and if he expands his business into one and then puts another little office in there or something, I don't know. He was talking about some kind of print shop or sign shop. And we get that downtown where people are walking down to get stuff done. I mean, the Donut Girls is pretty good. I mean, they're, there's people there all the time.
They're, they're doing great.
Yeah, they're doing great. They're in great location. No, I, you know, and I told, I told him that, look, nobody's gonna go over there and buy a packaged donut before they come over here and have your coffee and donuts. And sit down and talk to Ted, you know? Just cause it's, it's fun. So, uh, you know, I mean, and, and the fact that, you know, even, even, uh, Dave Foster says she knows everybody's name.
Right.
Cause he walks in, hi Dave, you know, she says it, everybody, everybody, she knows their name. They walk in, I mean, that's just the way it should be. So, I mean.
It's all done? So, on the other hand.
What is, what, what's the deal with that flag up there?
He, he, I don't know.
I don't know what's going on.
So on the other hand, I know at one time we talked about doing something out here with this parking lot and behind, you know, these stores and, you know.
Still needs some.
I know, is, is it changed with, you know, Smitty buying Johnny's Own Store or?
Perhaps. Smitty said to me flat out, he'll give the city all the land he owns on the island.
Okay.
If we wanna make it public park. He also is willing to give some money. So, I mean, because it'll make a difference in his business and, and he knows that. I think that we need to work out some type of plan to do it in phases and go for rural development grant money every year. Because for over four years, I think it was Elmont got between thirty and fifty thousand dollars a year to pay for parking in their downtown.
It seems to me that, that USDA grant, if you dedicated a space for a farmer's market.
Yeah, definitely.
That you were eligible for a hundred percent grant and I wanna say it was like up to a hundred thousand dollars. Now, the whole thing doesn't have to be a farmer's market, but you have to have like a desert, an area that you're gonna say, oh, we're this market.
Have you been to downtown Lafere? They've got a little covered area that's a farmer's market right next to the courthouse and, and they did all that with USDA. So, I mean, yeah, if we, if we have local people selling local products and have a farmer's market, like I said, I think it would be great to pave all underneath the, the water tower and have those high tension, uh, sales that cover the whole area of going to the buildings around and have a farmer's market underneath it. I think that would be beautiful.
Yeah, it would too.
And you get a lot of people coming in for a covered farmer's market.
Yep.
And those sales, those sales are not very expensive compared to what you get. You know, and they last for twenty-five years. You could actually have it while you take them down in the winter. Just like roll them up and, uh, Bart won't like it, but he's got a nice new pole barn back there that isn't full. You know, and if you ever went in that Quonset hut, it's a hell of a step ahead of that thing.
Right, pretty different.
So, it's all.
You've got a ruined sculptor.
Yeah, you've got a ruined sculptor up top, yeah. And, and if we can work out a grant where we get that, that Grace property and get that pole barn over there and, and then sell off the factory itself. I tell you though, I walked through the front part of that building, there are some gorgeous old beams that that is put together with. The wood that that building is put together with is amazing. These beams, these beams are, are wood beams that are like this and they're beveled on the sides. And I mean, for, for rough cut lumber, it is gorgeous.
It really, what's it being used for right now?
With old machines in there or something, isn't there? In the front half, there's really not any.
That's one of the part graders.
But, I mean, that could be a beautiful building if somebody went in and tore all the like little partitions that they put offices in and tore all that out. Took it back to a, like a, I mean, it was an open structure at one time and they just scammed a second floor in and scammed this in. Get back to the beams and where it's a big open, you know, foundry or whatever. Yeah, it would, it would be beautiful. But it needs to be kind of torn down because it's given in bad, bad rough shape. I think the roof's gonna be in that front part. The only problem with that piece of land, and you can't see it on here, there's a pond.
Oh, boy.
And yeah, who knows what's in that pond. Yeah, Jimmy Hoffa's in that pond. Don't care not to say that. They always tell me out here tomorrow. They love to go dig for him for some reason.
Maybe they'll clean it up.
The weird thing is, you know, Jimmy Hoffa used to own a farm in Emmett. And some people say his body's out there in that pond. Cause people in Emmett have donated, you know, Hoffa just was buried out here. But I don't think he really died. I think he's with Elvis and, and.
Grand Ravage, yeah.
Jim Morrison, yeah, Jim Morrison and, and even that.
They're all at the Burger King, Cravat Louvre.
Exactly, exactly. Working.
About to say, you thinking of business something?
Nope.
All right, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. Yep.